Okay. That's rock and roll.
I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for the evening of January 14th. You have before you an agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now going to move into a public hearing for the education appropriation. Mike, you want to take us through it?
I will take you through it. I will remind the school committee and the audience that what you will see tonight is a PowerPoint that reviews what we have taken in chunks over four or five meetings. So really, there will be nothing new presented to the school committee. This is sort of a dry run for thin come, and then to take any comments from the public after the presentation, if you will. As we go through our presentation, we always begin with the enrollment. So the first slide that you have is the enrollment from 2010 to 2021. Just to give a little perspective, you can see that we have grown from 1289 to 1683 this year. That's 400 students plus minus, and we have a projection for next year of 1725. That projection is our best estimate at what we can expect. We always can roll forward the numbers that we have, but we have new students coming into kindergarten, and so we haven't had that registration. In fact, that's this week, and we'll have a better idea of what those numbers are. And we also know that there are certain entry points in our schools that new students join us. So it's not unusual for new students to join us at the first grade level. They may have gone to a private kindergarten and then come into first grade. It's not unusual now for some students to come in at third grade into the intermediate school. And we often have students come in at the middle school ages, grades six, and then the other entry point, of course, is ninth grade, when the two private schools no longer serve beyond eighth grade. Then after that enrollment, I've included over the years the historical enrollment by grade, which gives you an idea of our numbers from 1998. And I think it's always interesting to look at this. You can look at it in many ways. Sometimes you want to go straight down and see how kindergarten has changed over the years, or the graduating senior class. If you go down, you can see that we've doubled that in 20 years, from 69 to 136. So that's always an interesting exercise. Our demographics have shifted as well. And the other thing I wanted to note is that this October, as I have pointed out before, we had 1683. It's the first time in 10 years that our enrollment has actually gone down slightly, from 1686 to 1683. Staying with the theme of enrollment and population, this is a graph of the ELL enrollment from 2005 to 2021. It's pretty drastic when you look at it over time, although the numbers recently have perhaps shown a slight dip, and then we're projecting a little bit more of an increase. It's very hard to predict these numbers, and some of it is, some of the numbers that decrease, you have to consider that we are flipping students, and so we have a number of students who no longer receive the ELL services because they've acquired a proficiency level in English that we've been striving for. So those numbers, again, are very hard to predict, the 2020, 21, and some of that sadly depends on the political landscape, and what that may mean for children coming to our shores. The special education population is the next slide, and you can see that that continues to rise. During the course of the year, you'll get a complete report from Michelle Brady, who will talk to you about the numbers inside of the numbers. You know, what disabilities are prominent, what disabilities may be growing in our district, and what are the challenges that we have, as well as the number of out of district. And I'll speak to the out of district again when we look at some of the enrollment, some of the figures in a further slide. So after going through the enrollment numbers, we take a quick look at the budget itself. The 2021 budget is projected to be $31,796,642. That is an increase of $1,660,000, understanding that 160 of that, as we explained at a previous meeting, is for one-time expenses that will go towards technology purchases. Then you can see in this slide the operating budget over time. We've gone back to the 2012 school year, so you can go, you can see very quickly that we've gone from $22 million to $31, almost $32 million in less than 10 years. It's a pretty significant increase over time. But of course, our enrollment over that time has also gone up considerably, so you would expect that. I always like to show the per pupil expenditure. This is a figure that is determined by a formula used by the state, so that there is consistency in comparing per pupil expenditures. And you can see the state has gone up over the years from $13,000 to $16,000. And likewise, Nantucket has gone up, probably not as much as the state over the last few years, but we continue to be higher than the state. We've talked about why our per pupil expenditure is higher than the state, explaining the cost of running a school system on an island, and vocational costs being more, special ed costs being more, athletic budget being more, and salaries, having to maintain healthy salaries so that we can attract teachers to our shores. That number two, I should point out, if you want to look a little bit further into it, you can see that the enrollment dictates those per pupil expenditures as much as the budget that we have to operate. So if the enrollment rises, then the per pupil expenditure doesn't look as high, and then when the enrollment decreases, it looks higher. So there's a direct correlation. Chapter 70, this is a historical comparison of the money that we get back from the Commonwealth in a pretty extensive formula, and Martin Anguloff has talked to you about that formula before, and they actually are in the process of changing that formula. So we will know, I'll say soon, Martin, when those new chapter 70 figures come out.
I believe next week is the preliminary forecast for chapter 70 for 2021.
Thank you. The federal grants, I've shared this slide with you before. These are the grants that we received for 1920, 2019, 2020, over $600,000, and it shows the areas in which we receive those funds. The one thing that is different from years past is the Perkins numbers, and that is the first time that we have, I won't say qualified, put in for those grant funds, and we expect that that will increase over time, and that is to offset some vocational expenditures that we have. The next slide is the NPS budget. It shows you what each department, facilities, each of the four schools, central office, technology, athletics, and the percentages of the budget for each of those areas. You'll usually find that the three schools, NES, NIS, and CPS, are pretty close in terms of the percentages. The high school is usually larger, and it takes into consideration high school programs that you may not find at those other school levels. And then, as we know, we look at the overall budget, and we know that only 17% is in expenses, and 83% is in payroll. At a school level, as they made their presentations, that payroll level is even higher. It's probably, I think it's been between 87% and 90% of the school-level expenses. The administrative team works with certain parameters every year. We always want the budget needs to be linked to the district and to the school goals, and I think you'll see this as we go over the additions shortly. Justification of the building budgets for 2021 need to be based on projected enrollment, but it's, I really have tried to emphasize this year, it's not simply based on enrollment, it's also based on the needs of the students. And the needs of the students in our district, and I think across the Commonwealth and across the country, are increasing significantly. We ask building principals to identify what's essential, what are essential services for their students. We've talked as a school committee about maintaining the balance and sustaining support for systems that support the, not only the academic intellectual growth of our students, but the physical, social, and emotional development of those students as well. We've worked hard over the last few years to develop all of our budgets to closely reflect actual expenditures, and Martin does a good job of meeting with department heads and principals to show them the history of each of their line items, so that they can see whether their budgets have been accurate, or whether they are consistently overspending or underspending a particular line. And that is what helps us try to avoid line item transfers, and I think over the last three or four years, we've improved significantly since that was pointed out by the school committee, and I think everybody understands the frustration of having to make line item transfers early in the year. That would indicate bad budgeting. If you make line item transfers, you know, in April, May, that's to be expected because there's money available that we redistribute to other needs, but if it's happening in September, October, it means we didn't budget appropriately. So we've worked at that. It's still a work in progress, but I think we've made significant gains. We've also worked hard. Diane has presented to you utility expenses over the years in electricity, and fuel oil, and now propane. And now that NIS has been up and running for a few years, it's a little bit easier to be more accurate in our, in what we anticipate those costs will be. When she presented facilities earlier, I think two months ago now, she showed you that we were moving some things from one school to another because the three-year averages had showed us that we were underspending here, but overspending in another account. Then we, this is a place to see in two slides what the increases to this year's budget are. There really aren't decreases to this year's budget. We've increased instructional technology slightly at NES, but in terms of staffing, we're adding a full-time EL teacher. Kelly reviewed that for you and showed you the increasing numbers. And quite frankly, we're understaffed in ELL at NES today. So that's an important position for us to add. We also hope to add a preschool teacher. We've added preschool teachers over the last three years. I think it wasn't that long ago that we had two, and pretty soon, we're going to have four or five, and we're working our way towards universal preschool. And then the leap, when we have the space, won't be as significant when that time comes. Also adding a preschool teaching assistant, pre-K teaching assistant. I did make the point, and I would like to reiterate, that the town of Nantucket did give us the two TAs for kindergarten this year that we had talked to them about, and so that did happen. The second one has taken a little while to hire because we really wanted somebody who was bilingual, and that recommendation for hire crossed my desk today. So that person, I expect, will start as soon as we can process them. And then a slight funding increase in professional development services at NES. At NIS, again, a small increase in general instruction technology, and an increase in funding in general instruction supplies, as well as expanding what is now a .4 Spanish teacher at NIS to .6, so that all three grades, 3, 4, 5, will participate in that program. We're excited about that. An additional halftime social worker at NIS, and we've talked about some of the needs, the mental health needs of not only the children, but the families that they're living in. And I think that is something that is challenging all of our schools. And we've added social workers last year, and we're continuing to try to fill that need, to address that need. Then an increase in professional development, professional services. So you're seeing that pretty much across the board. Professional development is expensive, and professional development done right is even more expensive. And by that, I mean you have to do follow-up, and doing the one shot, you know, might feel good for the moment, but unless you follow that professional development with good, you know, bringing that person back. And so we do that, done a lot of that in ELA, in our schools, and in mathematics. We need to start doing that in science. A lot of changes coming there as well. And someday, the Commonwealth will even revamp the social studies standards to a point where social studies counts in school. Sorry, that's an editorial from a former social studies teacher. At the middle school, we're bringing back a world language. Julie talked to you. We want to say world language because that could be Chinese, but it may also be Spanish for everyone. And so really, that depends on the candidates that we can bring in. We actually have an interesting Chinese candidate that may be filling in a maternity leave for us, so that might be an opportunity to watch that person and think about them for the future. The .6 FTE is really to round out, make a full-time equivalency for a technology teacher at the middle school, which, as we explained, we had at one point and lost as we really couldn't find an adequate person to come in and run that position. And then a special education teaching assistant. We have a pretty large group of IDSC students coming in from the intermediate school, and sometimes they move forward with a, an aide, if that aide is one-for-one for one of those students, but we anticipate that need. At the high school, increase in funding, again, in general instruction technology, and then an additional special ed teacher. That teacher, as I think Michelle and John explained to you, is to break into two groups, our present IDSC team in the high school. Our IDSC students often are educated until their 22nd birthday, and so your age range at the high school, if they come up to the high school when they're 14 or 15, which is, you know, eighth grade age, that range grows, and so we have some students on the upper end of that range, and we'd like this new person to help break up that age range, but also do some specific vocational programming for the children in that program. And then an increased funding in library, excuse me, special ed supplies, that would correlate to the new teacher, library technology supplies, and then also some professional development expenses there. See, the same thing in ELL. You don't see staffing necessarily there because it was in the elementary school. And then professional development in ELL as well. In the only central office position for special ed, we explained that we'll be providing a team chair to be able to, excuse me, take the burden off of some of the, all of the meetings that we're running and make sure that they're run well. Technology, we've talked about this, repair and maintenance up a little bit, software up a little bit. In talking with Jen recently, I think we believe that the software actually is going to have to go up even more than that, as we have to update some programs that are aging out. And then certainly, the technology hardware, again, understand that that's a one-time increase that the town agreed to put in, but we also have funds in the budget for that as well, and we have some funds that you'll see in a few minutes in capital for that. So we hope that we'll be giving technology the shot in the arm that it needs to upgrade. And then we have some increase in curriculum remediation, central office. That actually is to offset the costs of summer boost, which over the years has sort of become something we expected of community school. And in talking with Tracy, I think we agree that that really needs to be operationalized and not something subsidized by the community school every year. Speaking of the community school, this shows you the revenue breakdown of the community school. You can see, and over the years, it's fluctuated and was, went up to 402,000 way back in 2002. I was interested to see that, and then started to decrease probably with the downturn in the economy and belt tightening across the district. And my first year here, I think it, with Pauline at the helm, I think it went down to a low of 235,000, and then since that time, has started to go back up. But as we explained, you have to be careful because 100,000 of that increase from the 350,000 to maybe 450,000 was because they assumed the costs of healthcare. And in the last two years, we've increased that appropriation from 450,000 to 550,000 in this current projection. The next slide shows residential tuitions, and it's a slide that I created the first year that I came because I was concerned that we had an appropriation of 478,000, but we were spending a million dollars for the students who were going out of district. And so a small amount of that, 193,000, was circuit breaker, and we had to make up the difference of 340,000 that first year. And what that meant at the time was that we had to find 340,000 elsewhere in the budget because those were expenses that we had to pay for. And that was tough, and so I, Glenn and I were sort of bound and determined that that wasn't going to happen again, because really, you're robbing from Peter to pay Paul in that situation, and that's not healthy. So the next year, as you can see, we increased the appropriation in special ed considerably, increased the circuit breaker slightly, and our budget differential was 121,000 that we had to make up. And since that time, we're no longer operating that way, and that's a good thing. Between circuit breaker and the appropriation, we've been able to cover our costs. We've talked to the school committee before. Anticipating residential tuitions is extremely difficult. We don't know who might move into our district from outside of the Commonwealth. We don't know what students in the district might all of a sudden go into crisis, and so I'm, I'll be honest, a couple of years ago, we started the stabilization fund, and I think we have 200,000 in that, Martin?
Uh, 250.
250. 250. 250,000 in the stabilization fund, which New Hampshire had always allowed you to do, and Massachusetts didn't start doing that until a few years ago. So you can take year-end unanticipated expenditures, surplus, and put them into the stabilization fund so that if you have a catastrophic year where somebody moves in or you have more residential tuitions than you expect, you can draw on that money. So we have that. At this point, it would be my goal to add 100,000 out of this year's year-end if we have that possible, because already this year, we have identified two, actually, three students for residential placement that we hadn't budgeted for. And these are children who are, you know, very needy and have sort of gone through all of the least restrictive environments that we have available for them. But this is a growing, it's a growing challenge for our schools. And I think the challenge next year in the budget will be to increase that appropriation because I think that's a little low. Now, we can get through the coming year, but you don't want to draw on, you have the ability to draw on your circuit breaker over two years, but you don't want to do that. Because then the following year, the spike in your appropriation is going to be off the charts. So I think between or among the stabilization, the appropriation, and the circuit breaker, we can manage it now, but it's going to be something to really keep an eye on. We're also talking about, you know, what programs? Can we develop a therapeutic day program on Nantucket? That's a conversation that's taking place now. And just the finances, if you're spending $200,000 for a residential placement and you have three of them, if you took that $600,000, what can you create on island for a therapeutic day program? Now, that, the math makes you say, that's a no-brainer. You know, do it. The challenge becomes in staffing that appropriately, because if you don't staff it appropriately, those kids that go into the therapeutic day program are still going to end up in residential program. So it's a complex problem. But right now, you know, Michelle and Beth and Martin and I are looking at that and managing it, but it's definitely something to keep your eye on. So what will we accomplish with this budget? Increase staffing and support for students with special needs at all schools, greater support for preschool at NES, increase staffing for ELL students at NES. And Kelly talked with you, and I think Kim said the same, that, you know, the better we do in those younger grades, the more kids who are going to come to proficiency and have success in our schools. So that's an investment that we need to make. Increase in social worker, as I noted, at NIS. Expanding world language at NIS and CPS, and the technology integration teacher at CPS. And I should have put the increase in technology, support for technology hardware across the board. I will add that for FinCom. In addition to the budget that we have presented, we also have capital project requests that have gone to Capcom, and we'll be interested to see what they recommend to FinCom. These are not necessarily in order of need. I think if you go, the first thing is the campus-wide master plan. We've talked a little bit about that at school committee. We've had several great meetings, and Beth has been a part of that with a group of probably about 20 that are looking at what will we need on our site 10 and 20 years from now, not just what we need next year. And as I explained to the school committee before, we don't want to start building athletic fields and then three years later say, oops, we need to put a building there. You know, that's not a good use of the district funds. So that's a fun project, and it's a puzzle that will continue to come together. We have a really good committee representative of the community, and Tim sits on that community, I mean, on that committee for the school committee. We have $300,000 in buildings and grounds improvements. We've changed this over the years, and Diane recognized that rather than identify a specific school, we're better served by putting it into a district fund. When you put it in at a specific school, you could have leftover money in that school that they don't need to use, and so it could sit there for a little while. So it's better to have that district pool of funds for that. And we have a number of things. We will continue to do the cabinetry at NES. So it's not seen by most of you because the two clusters are tucked way away in the kindergarten and first grade, but it's a significant improvement. And we do flooring every year in each of our schools. We do concrete aprons and any number of things. Sometimes the shingles on the siding. And probably the biggest priority, I think, is the NHS boiler replacement. And this is a $300,000 figure. This was original to the building, which was constructed in 1990. It's been refurbished twice, as this says, and Diane, I think, sometimes uses tape to keep it going. But, yeah, tape and prayers. And so we've had a nice winter so far, and that's a good thing, but this needs to be done, and it needs to be done next summer. And the Capcom knows that that is our highest priority of all of these. The Bobcat replacement, you'll see those in, you know, every two or three years for Capitol Committee as they get a lot of wear and tear. But they seem to have served us well, and the last one was early 2000, I think. And then finally, our IT infrastructure. We have a number of things that need to be upgraded, and we have done a lot of virtualizing of our servers. But we have phone servers and rapid recovery storage array. And if you ask me what that is, I really can't tell you. I'll have to defer to Jen. But we're also, one thing that I think you can understand is that a lot of the smartboards that we put in 10 years ago are starting to age out. And we're looking at whether they should be replaced by interactive whiteboards or whether some classes are better served by more of a interactive panel or television. And it really depends on the needs of the class and the teacher. So those are some pretty big expenses, and I think by the end of the, of the school year next year, we will have made considerable progress. You know, we laugh that technology is a very hungry beast. And I think years ago, when the first technology or computers came into the schools, and some of you aren't old enough to remember, the Apple IIEs and GS, and if you got a GS, you thought you were rocking and rolling. But the thinking originally was, by school districts, we'll make one big-time investment, and then we're set. And I don't think all of those years ago, we realized the planned obsolescence of technology and that you're always chasing that beast, whether it's the hardware or they make software that won't run on the old hardware, so you have to upgrade your hardware, and then they upgrade the software. It's a very hungry caterpillar, if you're familiar with that, with that book. But we'll make some progress. The downside of all of that funding is that we end up with a lot of old technology that we have to discard, and it's a lot of work to make all of those purchases and get all of those machines up and running. And so we've added staff in technology, and we've needed to do that. Effective this month, we have a technician for every school. I think those four people will be used in different ways, and I think right now Jen is training with some of her other staff of the new person. But our ratio of technicians to schools is pretty good. So that is my presentation. It's a lot to throw at once, but I know you've had it in small bites, so I'll turn it back to the chair.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Come on, somebody's got to have a question.
It's all staff.
Really, any public?
It's all staff.
Public here, it's all staff.
Well, they are public. Okay. Any questions from the committee?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Steve?
No, I'll reserve them for next week.
So we will, we will have on the agenda for the 21st, a vote to authorize an appropriation, and that will be the time at which you can talk about any part of the, of the budget that you might see differently. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?